Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'm going to start with what I think is already happening, and that's people turning in speaker cards. If you're intending to speak on any item on or off the agenda, if you could please let our city clerk know. That way, we can monitor that. Okay? So I'd like to start with asking Councilmember Marks to lead us in the pledge.
All right, please stand. So the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. If you could remain standing while we have an invocation by Rabbi Faith Joy Dantowitz.
Good evening. Mikorah Chaim, source of life. We thank you for the gift of life. On this evening before elections in our nation and our community, we thank you for the gift of freedom to have our voices be heard. Whether we vote by mail or in person, we who are of voting age understand that with freedom comes responsibility to participate in our community, to care for those in need, to honor the elders, to provide for the children, to comfort the mourners, to celebrate with friends and those we don't yet know, and to via hafta l'rayacha kamocha, to love our neighbors as ourselves. Whatever protections, joys, and comforts we have are the same things we strive for our neighbors to have. God, thank you for endowing us with the gifts of compassion and discernment as we engage in the work of building community. Thank you to those willing to serve, and thank you to all who engage in the civic duty of voting. And on this evening where we once again experience the blessing of rain, and tomorrow as well, I'd like to offer an excerpt from this poem by Marge Pierson, "The Art of Blessing the Day." This is the blessing for rain after drought. Come down, wash the air so it shimmers, A perfume shawl of lavender chiffon. Let the parched leaves suckle and swell. Enter my skin, wash me for the little chrysalis of sleep rocked near plashing. In the morning, the world is peeled to shining. This is the blessing for sun after long rain. Now everything shakes itself free and rises. The trees are brightest pushcart ices. Every last lily opens its satin thighs. The bees dance and roll in pollen. And the cardinal at the top of the pine sings at full throttle, fountaining. This is the blessing for political victory. Although I shall not forget that things work in increments and epicycles and sometimes leaps that half the time fall back down, let's not relinquish dancing while the music fits into our hips and bounces our heels. We must never forget, pleasure is real as pain. The blessing for the return of a favorite cat, the blessing for love returned, for friends return, for money received unexpected, the blessing for the rising of the bread, the sun, the oppressed. But the discipline of blessings is to taste each moment, the bitter, the sour, the sweet, and the salty, and be glad for what does not hurt. The art is in compressing attention to each little and big blossom of the tree of life to let the tongue sing each fruit, its savor, its aroma, and its use. Attention is love. What we must give, children, mothers, fathers, pets, our friends, the news, the woes of others. What we want to change, we curse and then pick up a tool. Bless whatever you can with eyes and hands and tongue. If you can't bless it, get ready to make it new.
Thank you. All right, everyone, seated. Okay, now this is our first meeting of November. I'd like to wish a happy birthday to Councilmembers Barco and Armandares, who have birthdays this month.
Thank you.
All right, city clerks report on posting the agenda and roll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The agenda was posted on Thursday, November 3rd at 11:00 AM. Councilmember Armandares?
Here.
Councilmember Barco?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Lito Munoz?
Present.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blankley?
Here. Okay. Item 1.2, Orders of the Day, none. 1.3, Employee Introductions. We have a few, and we will start with Public Works. Director Darrell Jordan will introduce his peeps.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to introduce four of our newest staff members tonight. Marco, let's start with you. I'd like to introduce tonight Marco Martinez. He's a native of the Central Coast, being born and raised near here in Watsonville. He joined our Public Works engineering team and will be working with our capital improvement group. He's a graduate of San Jose State University with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. He has passed his engineering and training certification and is pursuing his professional engineering license now. He joins us from a previous position with two years' experience, similar duties with the City of Salinas. He enjoys self-improvement with a rigorous fitness regimen and is a big 49er fan. Please welcome Marco Martinez.
Just want to say it's really great to finally get back to a smaller community such as the one where I grew up in. So it's great that I'm finally here.
All right, thanks.
Looking forward to my coming months with the City of Gilroy and years.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce to you Roberto Chavez. He has joined our water team in the Operations Division of Public Works as a maintenance worker. He joins us with over 14 years of trucking and building material industry experience. He has experienced operating heavy machinery and customer service in sales departments. He is an avid fisherman. And tonight, I'd like you to welcome Roberto Chavez, please.
Hi, good evening. I just want to thank City of Gilroy for giving me the chance to work and looking forward for it. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Next is Christian Martinez. Christian? Christian has also joined our water team in the Operations Division of Public Works as a maintenance worker. He brings over eight years of experience of electrical, residential construction, and even F-5 missile assembly for Lockheed Martin Aerospace, believe it or not. Pretty cool. He enjoys being active through exercise, hiking, and a great book as well. Please welcome Christian Martinez.
Thank you, thank you. I want to say thank you to Matt and Darrell for giving me the opportunity, also to the City of Gilroy. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Daniel Contreras. He has also joined our water team in the Operations Divisions of Public Works as a maintenance worker. Daniel provides a wide array of technical skills, including low voltage data, fiber optics, interpreting construction plans and specifications. His experience also includes water pump maintenance and water renovations. He is studying to achieve his Level 2 Water Distribution Certification, which will bring great value to our team. Daniel also enjoys the outdoors and spending time with his family and friends. His hobbies include ocean and freshwater fishing. Please welcome Daniel Contreras.
I just want to say thank you to Darrell and Matt for giving me this opportunity and for the City of Gilroy. I'm looking forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all, welcome. All right, Chief Espinoza. You've got a couple of peeps, I see.
I'm happy, Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the public, happy to introduce our three new additions. I'll start with Police Officer Leonor Velazquez. Her hire date is the first of the month. We took her from the Marin County Sheriff's Department, where she spent five years there. She was at Sonoma State, and she got her degree in criminal justice. And the interest in law enforcement sparked there, where she was a cadet for two years, eventually being hired as a deputy sheriff for three years. In her spare time, she likes to be outdoors, spending time with her family and hiking. And she's very excited to serve the local community here in Gilroy. Welcome, Leonor.
I just want to say thank you, and I'm very excited for this new opportunity and just for the community I grew up in when I was young. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Police Officer Nico Devilliers. Hire date of November 2nd. Nico was a law prevention officer here at Walmart, and he had many interactions with their officers. And that's where the spark for law enforcement grew. Unfortunately, we lost him to the Department of Corrections for five years. So he was a correction officer five years and eventually going to the police academy last year. He is married with two beautiful daughters. In his spare time, he enjoys spending time with his family and friends, barbecuing, and working out at the gym. Nico Devilliers.
I just want to say I'm very honored and proud and excited to serve the City of Gilroy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, we have Community Service Officer Matthew Lopez. Matt currently resides, and he comes from a public safety family, his father being Captain Greg Lopez and his mom, also a nurse. He is from Hollister. Prior to coming to the department, he worked in the retail industry and where he learned how to provide excellent customer service. Graduated from San Bernardino High School and currently enrolled at Gavelin College, pursuing a degree in communications. His ultimate goal is to eventually wear a GPD officer badge. In his free time, Matthew enjoys spending time with his family, playing golf, working out, enjoyed watching baseball, football, and UFC. Welcome, Matt Lopez.
I would just like to thank the City of Gilroy and my family and just thank everyone for this opportunity. It means a lot.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, sweet. Those are happy things. Okay, moving on to item two, also happy things, ceremonial items. And it is United Against Hate Week coming up again. We have a proclamation that I'm going to read, and then the city will promote it, right? When the week comes. So whereas the United States is a nation of immigrants whose strength comes from its diversity, and whereas the Constitution enshrines equality on all individuals, regardless of race, gender, orientation, religion, or political views, and whereas the City of Gilroy wishes to affirm its commitment to the well-being and safety of all of its diverse communities, including Black and Indigenous and people of color, Asian American Pacific Islander, LGBTQ+, and all others, and to ensure that diverse communities are not alone and that they can speak out to help stop the spread of bigotry. And whereas due to the history of violence against communities of color, we must work together to create community-centered solutions that stop the violence in all communities. And whereas the City of Gilroy stands with our diverse communities and calls on all constituents and leaders to join us in condemning racist, homophobic, and harassing attacks against other humans in all forms and renewing our commitment to speak out against such attacks, defend and protect those targeted, and seek out and punish those who commit hate crimes against any members of our community. Now, therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, on the 7th day of November 2022, together with the city council, do hereby proclaim November 13th through 19th of 2022 as United Against Hate Week. Okay? It's okay to clap if you want. You don't have to. Okay, the next proclamation is for Arbor Day. I'm going to take this to the front because we have our Parks and Rec Commission Chair, I think, here to accept it. All right, ready? Okay. Proclamation of the City of Gilroy. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, on the 7th day of November 2022, together with the city council, do hereby proclaim November 16th, 2022, as Arbor Day in the City of Gilroy. I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations to come. With that, I pass this on to you.
I wasn't expecting this. I was going to hide behind the podium. I'd just like to say, just quick, good evening to Mayor Blankley and members of the council. Again, I'm Teri Graham, and I'm the Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. And I'm here to invite all of you, as Mayor Blankley said, to celebrate Arbor Day, a day to celebrate the city's trees requirement that allows the city to maintain its Tree City USA designation, which we've held for 41 years. So the presentation will be at Sunrise Park on November 16th at 2:30. And we've had previous celebrations at numerous parks around the city. And as the Chair, I'll be introducing the event, followed by remarks from the mayor. And West Coast arborists will be providing the trees for us to plant. So we look forward to seeing anybody and everybody and come and help dig a hole and plant that tree. Thank you so much.
Okay. I'd also like to say that November is Lung Cancer Awareness Month. And I also want to congratulate Bill Headley on 44 years of service. He has retired after that length of time. Okay, 2.15. This is the annual Library Commission presentation. And that's going to be given by Victoria.
You're doing it perfect. Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council and our Gilroy community. My name is Victoria Coverson Baxter, and I am currently serving as the Library Commission's Chair. And this is my second year on the commission. I am happy to represent my fellow commissioners. And they are Katherine Robinson, Gabriella Kim, Sumana Reddy, and Said Nushubadi. Every moment is an organizing opportunity and every person a potential activist. Every minute a chance to change the world. And that's a quote from Dolores Forth. And I invite all of you to participate in the wonderful Smithsonian Museum that we have in the library. And information is outside in the lobby.
Thank you, Mayor, for opening that exhibit. It opened on Saturday. We are very excited to bring it here, and we were thankful for the Mayor's presence. Councilmember Hilton was there as well. We look forward to seeing you all on Saturday and in the future for the rest of the exhibit.
Awesome. So we're going to talk about our initiatives. Currently, the library's services are back and better than ever and open every day. Some of the patio project has been completed. And I believe, Madam Mayor, you were able to tour some of that in the summer and have a walkthrough. And we're very excited about the summer reading program that has taken place over the years and that continues. And more programming like this and participation will definitely continue. In the future, the library's focus is on library spaces. Adaptive spaces and reimagining and updating the Kermit space. Community involvement, like National Night Out, programming opportunities, and inclusive displays continue as we move to reach everyone in our community. 10 years of service. We are happy to share amazing stories of over 6 million circulated items, over 8,000 programs, which included early learning readiness, migrant education, onsite power school partnerships, which results in in-person enrichment. A gate count of almost 3 million patrons walked through those doors and experienced the library, and some for the first time. And over 41,000 volunteer hours.
And we're always looking for volunteers.
And 14 new staff positions. For our strategic plan, we're going to have Cassandra share.
And I am, I don't even know my own name. I'm Cassandra Wong. I'm currently the community librarian here at the Gilroy Library. I have been in that position since 2020. So this has been a really great learning experience for me, kind of going in while the plane and building the plane while it's still in the air during the pandemic. So currently, we're looking at our strategic plan. This includes highlights and our priorities that were given to us based on feedback from the community. Some of the elected officials were involved in that. Our community-based organizations all had a hand in kind of shaping what we think our priorities are for the next five years. They include being a welcoming space, a space that is reflective of our community, that listens to what's going on in the lives of our constituents and our patrons. We try to inspire and be inspired by our communities. We are so excited for everything that you all have to offer, and we want that to be reflected in our services. And we continue to try to innovate. We're trying to create a culture that fosters opportunity and fosters growth. So we encourage you all to be a part of that process and join us at the library. Library cards are free, and we have so much material and information to share with you. So we look forward to you walking in those doors. Seven days a week, we're open. And we'll see you all soon.
And on behalf of the Library Commission and the staff, we want to thank you, Madam Mayor and council and our Gilroy community for moving the work of the library forward. And again, you're invited to the Dolores Forth Smithsonian exhibit and more to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Chair Diana Benz from the Open Government Commission giving the annual presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, city council people, citizens of Gilroy. I'm Diana Benz, and I'm currently the Chair of the Open Government Commission, which seems to be maybe one of the least-known commissions, but I think maybe one that should have more awareness for the community. I would like to introduce one of our commission members. Karen Ansberger is here. She's the vice chair. And so let me just start by saying the stated goal of Gilroy's Open Governance Ordinance is to give citizens of Gilroy greater access to information and to allow for more public participation. And I think that going forward, I think that that is one of our goals, is to make sure that people know that they can approach us in a meeting. We meet quarterly. And if they are not getting the information that they have requested, they can appeal to our commission. And so also, the Open Government Ordinance can be found online. I think a lot of people don't realize what a great website the city has. And you can access just a host of information. The commission advises the city council and provides information to other city departments on appropriate ways to implement the Open Government Ordinance. We develop appropriate goals to ensure practical and timely implementation of the OGO, which is the Open Governance Ordinance. We propose city council amendments to the OGO, although we haven't been before you since 2019 because of COVID, et cetera. So we're sort of catching up on our review of the logs of public records requests made for all of the departments in the divisions, various divisions of the city. So to this point, we reviewed 24 months of requests for public records, assuring that all responses are complete and answered in a timely manner. And I have to say, the city employees do a tremendous job with handling the volume of requests and getting them responded to in a timely manner. We have reviewed over 5,000 public record requests during that time. So just, for instance, 377 were city hall requests, and 4,697 were police. 95 were fire. So there's a huge amount of requests going on.
Diana, do you mean to have slides with this present?
Oh, no.
No. Okay. I have no. Okay. Just making sure that if it was supposed to be advancing, that it was advancing.
No.
Okay, that's fine.
So we have spent a lot of time talking about, with the city attorney or the city attorney representative who comes to our commission meetings, the development of Open Gilroy Project. So it just further enhances the availability of information to the citizens of Gilroy. So that's the presentation. That's what I have.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And for those who don't know, this OGO came into play in 2015, I think. Right, when Perry Woodward was mayor.
Right.
So it's a fairly new commission, especially when you consider 2019 was almost the last year before.
Before, right.
So anyway, thank you for all that you do, your whole commission. All of you. Okay, moving on to 3, 3.1. This is a public comment from members of the public on items not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. All right, and Ty, we have how many?
I have nine public speaker cards for this item, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Then we're going to go with three minutes on nine. Okay, we'll see. All right. So can you call? I would ask those nine people, you know who you are. If you could please come sit in this front row, it will just help us, you know, get through. And it makes it just go on. There will be a timer for the one that's at the podium. There'll be a timer right in front of you. So you just have to keep glancing at it to know where you are in the time.
First speaker will be Alan Harunaga, followed by Carl T., followed by Jan C.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilpeople. Recently, we've had an escalation in crime issues in our neighborhood. And so I've got a couple of questions and that I'd like to bring before you folks. One is, after researching the city website and the police department's website, there's no information about how many active patrol officers that we have at any given time, whether or not it's during the day or during the evening. So I'd like to find out what you folks could do in order to provide that information to the general public. The other thing is that the police website does have an organization chart, and that reflects that there are six patrol teams that are organized to cover four beats or districts. But there's no indication as far as what areas these districts are. Is it the west side, east side, you know, streets? All that information is not accessible. So again, I would ask that that be considered to be transparent so that the general public and our neighbors can also have that information. And the third thing, which relates specifically to our particular neighborhood, which is the Uvis Creek Neighborhood Watch Group that I'm asking this information for, is that the city consider the possibility of adding an additional street lamp on the Uvis Park Drive between Third Street and Laurel. on the Uvis Park Drive between Third Street and Laurel. In the past, there was a stoplight or a street light in that area, but it was removed because of the light reflection into the neighboring homes, I guess. But the trees and that have overgrown into that area. And with the crime that's taking place in that location, it would basically help immensely. And the other thing is, is whether or not the City Council would consider installing no overnight parking signs in that location as the City Council, the City of Gilroy has basically done in other problematic areas. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next speaker?
Carl T., followed by Jan C., followed by Nicole Craig.
Gilroy City Council members, you have a responsibility to uphold ethical standards by which your fellow council members serve this city. We represent C E A, Citizens for Ethics and Accountability in California, a watchdog organization bringing accountability leadership to local government with our bold investigative action and our representation of citizen interests at council events. Change is not occurring quickly enough in the city government because local citizens, one, are afraid to speak up on the failings of their officials. Two, may lack the ability to properly communicate their feelings. Three, feel that their single voice alone will be insufficient to bring about real change. Or four, because there are insufficient resources to uncover corruption and/or broken leadership. Today, we provide public comment on three ethical concerns which Gilroy citizens have brought to our local branch to clearly highlight to you ethical violations by one of your council members which citizens believe directly contradicts the character standards of their council office. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Jan C., followed by Nicole Craig, followed by Cindy K.
The first ethical concern relates to this council member's individual actions around Gilroy. The council member is constantly found at the same bars, clubs, and breweries each weekend, such as Tempo, Millius, and Capos, along with local vineyards, excessively drinking alcohol, buying multiple rounds of tequila shots or bottles of wine. Bartenders and personnel of such establishments have confirmed these weekly patterns, leading to apparent inappropriate involvement at a local nightclub with strippers and resulting in potentially two back-to-back DUIs in 2019 and 2020, the second which we believe he had hidden from public record. Although his online postings present a political image of "we are stronger together," admissions from past friends hypocritically indicate that constant partying and alcohol appear to be a part of his weekly civic duties. Sadly, when fellow citizens have decided to no longer participate in his debauchery, he has retaliated by unfriending them on Facebook and other social mediums.
Next speaker?
Nicole Craig, followed by Cindy K., followed by Grace T.
Thank you. That's a hard talk to follow. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm piggybacking on something that Mr. Harunaga said, and that is the elevated crime that's happening in the Uvis Creek neighborhoods between Gilroy High School and Gilroy Gardens. One of the problems is homelessness and homeless encampments in the creek area and the levee area. And I know we all have compassion for homeless people and the financial straits that people find themselves in. This is not a normal, ordinary homeless encampment issue that you would find on vacant land or county land, et cetera. These are people that are camping and living on a protected, a federally protected watershed. So they are contributing to, you know, they're adding human waste. I've seen human waste, human feces on the walking trail. And I know you're thinking, come on, lady, that's dog do. But, you know, it starts at the top of the rail and then drips down. And I've never seen a dog high enough to do that. They have trash. Obviously, it's both inhumane and unhealthy conditions. But again, this is a protected watershed. This is not the normal, or no, I wouldn't say normal, but the unfortunate instances where people have to camp on freeway, you know, on ramps and off ramps. And I think the council and police department and the city manager have an obligation to look at this homeless issue in that area in a different way and one that is sensitive to this federally protected and very important watershed. The other problem is that the homeless issue there is contributing to the crime in that particular neighborhood. I'm not saying that I've seen the homeless people do the crimes. I just know that I've seen an anecdotal increase in the homelessness in that area and an increase definitely of what our neighbors tell us and what we experience as crime. So I would encourage the City Council to look at this in a different way. This is not the last that you will hear of this. I have heard rumors that there has been some notice to the homeless in that area to vacate, but I don't know that that's correct. So I do encourage the council, when we come back with additional facts and information and the federal protection that the area is entitled to, that the council will listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Cindy K., followed by Cindy T., followed by Bill O'Connor.
I'm with C E A, Citizens for Ethics and Accountability. In addition to this returning lifestyle, the second ethical concern raised by citizens stems from a reputation of inappropriate relationships which we believe this council member has earned around Gilroy. The most recent appears to be alleged affair with a member of her own city management, the Economic Development Director, a relationship supposedly beginning while she was still married. This allegation raises a very high level of public concern due to the direct conflict of interest this would create if true. While he shamelessly showcases his relationship with her at all his public outings together, this alleged adulterous act should raise an inquiry by the council to confirm no violations between the city and council have occurred. This apparent affair was compounded by our understanding that this council member continues to live in the same house with his wife, with whom he has not finalized divorce, even after multiple years. Citizens believe this represents immoral behavior and are troubled it is occurring without admonishment from City Council, leading citizens to wonder if such action is condoned by you or simply being conveniently ignored for political purposes. In either case, it's a failure of leadership to leave this uninvestigated and unaddressed. The final topic relates to requests by citizens to have a council investigate into this council member's legality of office due to a concern that he was potentially being elected while not actually living within Gilroy at that time. Since more investigation is required, we ask council to confirm his legitimacy to have been legally elected at all. Furthermore, unlike the other members of this council who have clearly defined professions, our financial investigations have found that we believe are potential anomalies related to his income sources supporting his ability to serve on the council without pay, which also require further inquiry. We are auditing certain funding sources that are public record to confirm if multiple incomes have or continue to be received improperly. Should our investigation unfortunately uncover an unwanted truth, this would serve as yet one more major blow to our city's reputation and the council's ability to be trusted as leaders of the community.
Next speaker?
Grace T., followed by Bill O'Connor, followed by Crescencia Sanchez.
Hi, I'm Grace T., also with C E A, piggybacking off of Cindy here. In summary, our City Council and you as the leaders of our community have officially been put on notice. With elections not only this week but also in two years, the citizens of Gilroy fully expect this council to uphold the ethical standards required by city leaders. The recent unanimous unendorsement of this, excuse me, council member by the Santa Clara County Democratic Committee stated, "His voting history has harmed the residents and employees of Gilroy. We believe that his lifestyle, immoral compass, and reputation are even more destructive to the citizens and employees of Gilroy." The name of this council member about whom we have spoken is Fred Tovar, but sadly, we believe everyone here already knew that. Words are easy and social media postings are even easier. We want a city council that is ethically grounded in the character upon which our small city was founded. It is only with leadership integrity based on ethics and character that proper decisions can be made by the leaders entrusted with a massive responsibility for the citizens of Gilroy. Take the action now to show the citizens of Gilroy where you stand on the issue of ethics and character. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Bill O'Connor, followed by Crescencia Sanchez, followed by Marty Estrada.
Mayor, council members, mine's going to be a lot shorter and maybe interesting in different ways. When we look at the agenda, it says that public talks on agenda items are three minutes, but could be limited by the mayor without even saying how much it was. For speakers on the non-agenda items, speakers are limited to one to three minutes, varying at the mayor's discretion. I take a little exception to that because when I go look at the city's website, it gives very clear direction on how people can speak. It says if there's one to ten speakers, it's three minutes. If it's eleven to twenty speakers, it's two minutes. And if it's more than twenty speakers, it's one minute. I would think the only discretion that the mayor would have is if they, she doesn't want to, or any mayor doesn't want to limit it to that amount. But what I would, you know, I've been here the last two council meetings and seen confusion out in the audience when they've been reduced, when they thought they were going to speak three minutes, and it's been limited. I think you ought to put in your agenda the guidelines that the city has that says, you know, if it's this many speakers, here's the amount of time you have to speak so that it's very, very clear. And when the mayor comes and says, okay, there's twelve people, you got two minutes per the guidelines, not per my discretion, but by what your website says and what your directions for these council meetings say. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Crescencia Sanchez, followed by Marty Estrada, followed by Cheryl Parks.
Good evening. My name is Crescencia Sanchez, and I am the Beulah Wilson Center. It's a local nonprofit in Santa Clara County. And we work to, we are working on ending youth and family homelessness. I am here this evening to let the community know that November is Runaway and Homeless Youth Prevention Month. This is a nationwide campaign that's spearheaded in November. That's white, the green. We are here to really talk about really the resources in our community in Santa Clara County. We want the public to know that we are here. We are here to support our young homeless youth and families. Did you know that most of the youth in Santa Clara County that are homeless are around two thousand five hundred, are enrolled in Kinder to twelve grades? The longer a person is homeless, is the longer it takes to get them into transition into permanent housing. Lacking adequate employment and skills of independent living increases the likelihood the homeless youth will become chronically homeless as an adult. Beulah Wilson Center has been serving homeless youth and young parents in Santa Clara County for over forty-five years. The homeless clients that we serve typically range from the children of ages twelve to young adults eighteen to twenty-four, some who may have children themselves. Our goal is to provide an integrated system of care that will help our homeless youth clients attain stable housing, either through family reunification or through economic self-sufficiency. This means we not only offer immediate shelter, but we also offer other supportive services that include healthcare, mental health services, job training, financial literacy classes, and substance abuse treatment, parenting classes as well. Sixty-nine percent of homeless youth report suffering from mental health trauma. If you would like to know more about our agency and the work that we are doing to end homelessness and youth homelessness in the community, you could visit beulahsoncenter.org. And if you know a young person that is homeless and that is in need of services, they could call our hotline, Here For You Call Center, that handles all the waitlists in Santa Clara County for shelters. The number is four oh eight, three eight five, two four zero zero. The staff at the center work seven days a week, nine AM to seven PM, and we accept clients from all over the county. Our staff are trained to treat youth with respect and empathy. In fact, many of our staff members were formerly homeless themselves and share a bond with the youth that we serve. Thank you for your time this evening, and together we can work on ending youth homelessness in the community.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Marty Estrada, followed by Cheryl Parks, followed by Bob B.
Okay, so that's already more than ten, which is, it's okay. It's just that's why it's within the mayor's discretion at the time because it requires, it requires both ways. Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Mayor and the City Council, thank you for your time. I just want to bring up again, I know you heard it over and over, but we need a youth center. Today, we heard great presentations on qualifications for different groups. I would like to see a qualification for a youth center being built. We really need to put our hands to the plow. I know you have it in your general plan, but it's time to bring it out. What better services to support youth if not a youth center? A youth center with an aquatic center that provides multi-classrooms, multiple use rooms, so that we families can come with their children and do after-school lab and computer lab, have fun activities to work out. So I encourage this City Council to really start working at, let's do this. Let's make this youth center a reality. We need a youth center in Gilroy. We can't, we can't, we gotta stop waiting for this to happen. Just thinking about it, if we start today to build a youth center, what is it going to take? Five years to build, complete? We gotta do this now. You know who's suffering in the meantime? Who's becoming homeless? And who's going, getting into trouble and being arrested a lot higher here in Gilroy than they are in San Jose and many places, according to ZipCo? Is our youth, our youth here in Gilroy. Boys and girls getting arrested at disproportionate rates here in our city. But we need to change that narrative. I know we're going to be talking about five point one coming up, about the youth inventory. But we need to start looking at some steps, concrete steps, and to build a youth center because the community wants it. We did multiple surveys. They want this youth center. And they're waiting on you, you elected officials, to provide the leadership to make that a reality. And that would be something great for this city. If you look at San Jose, they have youth centers all over the place, southeast, west, and north. Gilroy, we do not have a youth center. It's listed on the website, on the city website as a youth center. There is no youth center here. We really need to get forward, go forward in building a youth center. It's important, it's important for our youth that they can go to a place, a refuge, a place to have fun, a place to meet other folks and have a great, great, great programming. But we can't do that. We're just wasting our time. You know, at Gadas right now, for this past summer, we were entertaining twenty-five, thirty kids a day. There's no youth center. We want a youth center to build on the next future of leaders, our youth leaders. And that's what we should be all concentrating on. We're the next, the next generation, the third generation's coming up. We need to support them so they don't get in harm's way. They don't get arrested. They don't become products of the prison to pipeline. We need to think about this, folks. And you guys are the leaders of this city for now. But we need your support to start this action going forward. Please, consider thinking about putting this on the agenda, and let's start building together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Cheryl Parks and Bob B.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Parks. And this past Saturday, my nineteen-year-old son found a loaded nine-millimeter pistol while walking our dog on a sidewalk in our neighborhood. It had been shoved into the most rip bush, but its grip was clearly visible. He ran home to me and said, Mom, I don't want you to be alarmed or anything. It's probably nothing, but I think there's a gun. I walked over there and I, the magazine was out, and I ended up taking a stick because I was just thinking it was Halloween. Trick-or-treater must have dropped their airsoft gun. And when I, because there was no clip, I put the stick in there. And I could tell by the weight, it was real, and I called the police. The police told me to wait there with it, and I did. And it was about an hour, maybe hour fifteen. And as I'm sitting on the curb, I noticed there's a, what do you call it? A bullet, you know, when they shoot, the casing, a casing that was sitting next to me, so that gun was fired. I'm just really thankful that a young child didn't find this gun because this story could have been, could have had a real tragic ending. Later that evening, around ten-thirty, our neighborhood had another major police event. I was sound asleep because I was sick. Multiple police cars, orders commanded over a loudspeaker, K nine units dispensed, an arrest was made. Word spread that the suspected Juniper Court Shooter's vehicle had been found alongside the Uvis Park Drive. And my neighborhood was told that an arrest had been. the Ubes Park Drive, and my neighborhood was told that an arrest had been made of the suspect. However, the next day, we learned that this was untrue and the suspect was still at large. And today, according to the Mercury News, Gilroy PD refused to comment on the status of the suspect, whether he's in custody, custody or at large. As a citizen of Gilroy, I'm concerned about the lack of transparency in our police department. I realize you don't want to create panic, but you, but don't you think that it should have been public knowledge that someone's car, that the police described as armed and dangerous, was found parked in your neighborhood? People would certainly take extra precautions to lock their doors and maybe not go walking outside alone. The citizens of Gilroy should not have to rely on social media, word of mouth, to find out what is happening. I understand that the Gilroy Police Department is transitioning into a more robust system to provide the community with crime data, incident mapping, and other information. You anticipate this new service will be available at the end of 2022, and I hope that this system is all that it promises, but what happens in the meantime? Couldn't you do more? There's a deterioration of public safety going on in our neighborhood, and I thank Allen and Nicole for setting up a neighborhood watch, and I thank Councilman Marks for telling us that if she is elected, that she will be attending that meeting.
Cheryl, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, and he has been apprehended and arrested. Okay. All right. Next speaker?
Last speaker is Bob B.
May I please, the council? I'm also with CA, EA, here to reiterate some points. The final topic relates to a request by citizens to have the council investigate into this council member's legality of office. There is concern that he may not have been living in Gilroy while he has been elected. We ask the council to confirm his legitimacy to have been legally elected. Furthermore, unlike other council members who have clearly defined professions, our financial investigations have found potential anomalies related to the income sources supporting his ability to serve on the council without pay. These anomalies require further inquiry. We are auditing certain public record funding sources to confirm if multiple incomes have been received improperly. Should, should our investigation uncover an unfortunate unwanted truth, this would serve as yet one more major blow to our city's reputation and the council's ability to be trusted as leaders of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, speaker times are guidelines, and in this case, it should have been two minutes each, but I don't know these things when cards come in after the fact. So I will continue to follow the guidelines, but have to use my judgment depending on the rest of our agenda. Okay, we're moving on to item four, which is reports of council members. Councilmember Barco.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Armanderos.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. First, I'd like to recognize November as Native American Heritage Month, a month where we acknowledge, honor, and celebrate the history, sacrifice, and contributions of the indigenous people of this continent. I'd also like to state that tonight's recognition of Cesar Chavez Day as an observed city holiday is a long time coming, given the tremendous contribution of Cesar's work to the people of our local community, our city, state, and country, in particular, the farmworkers who remain critical and essential workers that we all depend on. I'm proud of this council for taking this action and proud of Councilmember Tovar for initiating it. Thank you.
Councilmember Marks.
All right, just one item. Just want to remind everyone that the holiday parade that the Downtown Business Association puts on will be held on Saturday, December 3rd. And a week and a half ago, our Ad Hoc Committee for Gourmet Alley met with our city administrator and some of the building and business owners downtown. And I'll let Councilmember Tovar share some of the thoughts, but the main thought that I pursued that night was our boarded-up buildings and our empty buildings. And we were really stressing the importance that we have to get our downtown jump-started by filling these buildings with leases, with businesses coming in, because all of our businesses downtown depend on the vital, vitality of the businesses present. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor. From Visit Gilroy California Welcome Center, highlights for the September Google Analytics report included results from the Visit Gilroy social media campaign to promote wineries in Gilroy during California Wine Month. Seventeen winery posts reached over 40,000 viewers during the month of September. Blog readership continues to increase on the Visit Gilroy website, 217% increase over prior years. Two new blogs posted in September include Cool Cocktails in Gilroy and Halloween Happenings in Gilroy. The Visit Gilroy Board of Directors selected Frank Johnson as the new executive director for the organization effective November 2nd. Frank brings extensive experience in the destination and attraction segments of the tourism industry. Retiring Executive Director Jane Howard will remain on staff through November 15th to assist with transition and onboarding process. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, every two years, SVE files its Integrated Resource Plan, part of a larger planning process mandated by the California Public Utilities Commission. It's designed to ensure that electricity sector is on track to achieve the required statehouse, statewide greenhouse gas emissions reductions by 2035. Core to SVE's IRP analysis is to ensure that all portfolios provide a reasonable balance of clean energy, reliable capacity, and affordable rates. The Board of Directors approved three portfolios that maintain 100% carbon-free power mix with varying levels of renewables, renewables portable standards, all which will exceed the state mandated GHG free targets. Lastly, I had the chance to, chance for my first and great experience at the Sister Cities Welcome Reception for the Mayor and Vice Mayor of one of our sister cities in Portugal, and it was great to support an organization whose purpose is to further the people's democracy, and I look forward to those future events. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm the rep for that, so I'll be having that in my report, too. All right, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Just sort of piggybacking off Councilmember Marks' comments, we hosted Jump Start Gilroy, an event for our downtown businesses and building owners, and I want to thank Councilmember Marks and Armanderos for all the hard work they've done. First of its kind that we've had here in Gilroy in many, many years. And in addition to what Councilmember Marks shared, two of the other projects that we're pushing for is what we call Light Up the Night. We would light up all of our downtown decorative lighting, flowers, and something really, really nice so the folks feel welcomed at night and they feel safe. And then the other thing, too, pushing for is what we're calling a pop-up park, right next to the art center, so it'd be a pop-up park. We would have games, toys, all kinds of different things to attract more families downtown. So those are two things that we'll be eventually voting on. But again, I want to thank all the building owners and businesses. We had probably about 40 to 50 people in attendance, and all the feedback that we got, obviously, we took it to heart, and we'll be sharing that with the rest of the council. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember LaRoma Yose.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few quick updates. The Water District had its quarterly meeting last week. Despite the recent rains, we want to remind citizens that we are still very much in a drought, so the restrictions on water in terms of the number of days that people can water their lawns or ornamental plants, those are still very much in effect. So if you have any questions about those restrictions and what's required of you, take a look at valleywater.org. It's got all of those restrictions laid out there for you. Another item, we have the Veterans Day Parade coming up this Friday, November 11th, on Veterans Day, 1 o'clock in the downtown. A special thank you to the leadership over our Vets Hall for bringing that back. So that's a, that's a great opportunity to celebrate. And, and then finally, we know that there is a, an election coming up real soon. So if you haven't voted yet, you've still got just a little bit more time. But good luck to all of the candidates. I think those of us who are, are up here know how challenging and stressful, but also rewarding that process can be. So best of luck to those who wish to represent our city.
Thank you. Okay, my report does start with our Sister Cities Association. I, I am the rep there, and we were recently visited by the Mayor and Vice Mayor of our sister city, Angra, in the Azores. All of the city council was invited to the reception dinner, and that is what Councilmember Hilton attended, was the reception dinner. We welcomed them, I and Jimmy Forbes welcomed them at City Hall. We toured all of City Hall and the neighboring police department. We sent them off with gifts and mementos from Gilroy, and then, of course, the dinner reception at Old City Hall, which was very well-attended thanks to the volunteers of the Sister Cities Association. They are the ones to credit for our sister city relationships. They're the ones who keep things going, they're the ones who host the meetings, that keep those relationships with all six of these cities that are on these framed things behind us. So it's, it's a really fun thing to do. Hopefully, I can reciprocate by visiting Angra, which for me would be the second time next June, but first time as mayor in, in that capacity. It's, it's nice to reciprocate those things. But anyway, again, thanks to the Sister Cities Association. All right, VTA and Caltrain, not as, sorry, someone has a phone. Okay, Morgan Hill Mayor Rich Constantine has informed me that Gilroy City Council Rep to the Caltrain, Caltrain's Policy Group hasn't been attending meetings, and that Gilroy and Morgan Hill need to be present together to fight against the continued inequity of service to South County. I couldn't agree more, particularly with the passage of two recent tax measures that included South County, 2016 Measure B and 2020 Measure RR. Mayor Constantine and I both spoke at the last, at last Thursday's Caltrain Board Meeting to call the board's attention to Caltrain staff's latest South County Service Review, and that's as of October 2022, that now shows the fourth train being pushed out even further. Now they're saying fiscal year 2025. So unfortunately, public transportation services from Gilroy remain what they are and cannot be relied upon today to reduce traffic congestion that worsens as Gilroy's housing growth outpaces our job growth. Lastly, I'd like to invite the community to visit the Smithsonian's Traveling Exhibition on the Accomplishments of Dolores Suerta. This exhibition is right here at our own Gilroy Library, now through January 22nd, 2023. Okay, item five, Council Correspondence, 5.1. Leanne, do you want to say something, or, I don't know, is there a report with this? Just go into it. Okay. Just that the item is there.
Yeah, just that the item is there and the information that was requested has been provided.
And if I could make a comment, too, if you're, if you're done.
Okay. Well, I was gonna go to public, see if we had public comment, but you want public comment first? Okay, do we have anybody who wants to speak from the public on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have seven speaker cards.
Seven?
Yes.
Has it remained seven for a while?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, let's go three minutes each then.
Can I, can I make a clarification that actually might help the public comment?
Great.
So earlier today, I had requested, I had a couple of questions to staff. I won't go over the whole entire detail of what the email stated, but the report that you have in there, I expect that to be sort of further refined. One of the things that came back is that when it does state that the Gilroy Youth Center, that's actual program, not an actual center. So I do expect that to change. So just so you know, that's, we know, we all know that that's not an actual youth center, but it does provide services. And when you see on this report, so, anything that says Cesar Chavez Gym, obviously, that's at Gilroy Prep, and when you see services at Gilroy Prep, that means it's at Cesar Chavez Gym. So that'll get flushed out in a little bit, I just wanted the group to know that maybe before they make talks. And if you need to see that email, obviously, you can make a public records request or speak with the clerk. Thank you.
Okay, so, sorry?
I have a question.
Of, okay.
Of Leanne. Yeah, so.
Sorry, public, we're gonna wait on public comment.
Yeah, sorry, public. So this inventory is being provided as part of our packet, or how is the public going to?
It's public information, and it was information that was requested, so staff pulled together that information and is providing it back to council as part of the council correspondence, but it's information that can be shared publicly. Obviously, it's part of the agenda packet, so it's public information. And as Councilmember Hilton just spoke to, there are certain, maybe words that were used or, or.
No, I, no, I understand what he said, but what I'm asking for is the public can access this information as part of this agenda packet?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't know if that changes the number of speakers?
I would not know, unfortunately, but I have seven speakers.
Okay, so will, will the seven speakers who fill out a card, please come and sit in this row here so we can be, it's already after 7 o'clock and we haven't even started our consent calendar. So it would be nice to.
First speaker is Ramundo Armanderos, followed by Gabriela Mendoza, followed by Jacqueline Castillo.
Okay, so if you heard your name, can you please go to the podium?
Thank you, guys, for giving us time today to speak about this issue. So the reason that we are here tonight, I know, speaking for myself, I did review the inventory that was on the link to today's agenda, and I think that's why we came out was because we have some concerns about a couple of things. One is that, let me begin by first giving, you know, complete credit and acknowledgement and appreciation for Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Department staff. They've been, you know, working very, very hard in a difficult situation because there are fewer staff now than there was previously, and we have a lot of young people who are not going, are going without services because of the lack of staffing and also because of the lack of funding for Parks and Recreation Department. But going through the, and thank you also, Councilman Hilton, for clarifying that, that was one of the issues that came to my mind right away when I read the inventory was that Gilroy does not really have a youth center. What we've identified as youth center in the inventory is a small room, it's maybe 22 by 43 feet long, which is, you know, less than 900 square feet for a very large population of young people here in Gilroy, in particular on the east side. The other issue is that the Cesar Chavez Gym is, you know, a beautiful, you know, location and facility that was super needed in East Gilroy, but has been inaccessible to people, to people from the neighborhood that it was built for. So just to jog the council's memory, especially for those who weren't here at that time, back in 2004, the MACHA organization, Mexican Community Service Agency, that is no longer here, as well as myself and members from the community, we advocated for the HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, to invest $9 million in Gilroy's. What we had at the time was the National Revitalization Strategy Area, NRSA, which really included East Gilroy. So my frustration was with the inventory is that Cesar Chavez Gym has become inaccessible to the people that it was built for. So those $9 million were invested in East Gilroy, and now the cost of using the youth center is really high and is really out, outpriced, people living in the neighborhood it was built for. And I've even heard from the facilities manager who I spoke with from the school district that people from outside of Gilroy are renting the facility because they're the only ones that can afford it. So that's a big issue, and that's what I wanted to bring to light today with our comments during today's inventory, is that we need a youth center, of course, this just kind of highlights that we need another youth center, and also to clarify that we need more Parks and Rec staff, and we also need for this youth center that's there, or, I'm sorry, the gymnasium that's there, to be accessible to the community it was built for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Gabriela Mendoza, followed by Jacqueline Castillo, followed by Xavier Garcia.
Okay, hello, good evening, everybody. So just, also, I'm here to support the building of a youth center, community youth center here in Gilroy. We did a lot of canvassing with our youth out in the community of Gilroy. We did, we had petition signatures, a lot of people, a lot of the families. When we asked, and especially youth at the high schools, do you know of any programs that the city is, you know, having for the youth to be a part of, or like a youth center here in Gilroy? No, a lot of them, the majority, said no, that they did not know of any. They're like, oh, we have one, or what is a youth center? Like, they didn't even know what that was. So that is a little embarrassing, just because we have so much, so many families down on the east side that don't, I mean, although they see this little building there that's having programs, you know, month to month, or they have, they know that, they don't know that we, that the city of Gilroy has late-night gyms that's made, created for just youth specifically, ages 12 to, you know, 17. And, I mean, they're not, they don't even know what that is, and it's only being provided on Friday nights from like 5:00 to 8:30. So, you know, it's either the, the families, especially on the east side, are not getting this information, like, they don't know, like, there's nobody out there outreach-ing or like, you know, saying, hey, like, there's these things happening for youth, yo, come on, let's, let's come, like, be a part of this, motivate them, inspire them, and this is why we need a youth center in Gilroy, because a community youth center in Gilroy, because we want to inspire, we want to motivate, we want to make sure that youth have a safe space instead of being out there being, you know, seeing these guns that this lady just spoke about out in the bush, like, picking it, oh, I'm bored, I'm gonna go shoot someone, or, oh, I wonder if this is faker and I'm gonna go pull a prank. So we need to keep them busy. I know this because I work with a lot of youth, Monday through Friday, I'm here, I should be home, my baby girl, but I'm not. I'm here because I am so passionate about this. I was out on Las Calles all the I was out in Las Calles all the time in the streets, trying to find a safe space. I did not want to go home. And I see a lot of youth doing the same thing. They don't want to be home because a lot of these homes are broken. A lot of these families, you know, have a lot of stuff going on, and they just want a safe space. They want to be productive. They want to play sports. Youth are getting suspended. Youth that are, students that are playing in sports are getting suspended, expelled out of school. And what are they doing now? They wanted to do sports and now they're just out, you know, in a car chase and beating up people, or, you know, I hear these, these are things that are actually happening. If they could have gotten some guidance, maybe a youth center to play sports, to be inspired, they wouldn't have been doing these, you know, these things out in Las Calles, in the streets. So I just really, really want to push for it. And I just appreciate, you know, the staff from Gilroy, like Ramondo said, of their hard work. I know how hard that is to work with youth especially. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Jaclyn Castillo, followed by Xavier Garcia, followed by Bea Santos.
Good evening, staff of the city council. My name is Jaclyn Castillo, and I'm here to represent the youth in Gilroy. So I'm so glad that Councilmember Hilton pointed out that we don't have a youth center, but we have youth programs. So what I want to actually point out is that I did go visit the San Isidro Youth Center, or what is called the Youth Center, just to go do homework. I realized that when I got there, that there was no youth center. It was just a building that looked like a public restroom with a huge park, so I give credits for the park. But then I tried to open the door to what was the youth center, and it was closed. So not only that, the youth center wasn't like, super big, but it was closed. I couldn't do my homework there. So what I seen on the door was a calendar. So what the calendar said was parents helping parents events. There was a COVID center event. There's community events, painting workshops, candidate forums, and food distributions. So what I noticed was that there was no workshops, or programs, or activities, enrichments for youth. There was activities for the community, but not for the youth. So I'm really interested in what you guys have to say, that there's programs here in Gilroy, because I'm not really aware of any besides the ones that we do at Caras. Like Gabby said, she did mention how there's a lot of youth here that are not aware of any programs, maybe because there isn't any. I'm not completely sure, so I'm very interested in finding out. I also went on the recreation, I mean, sorry, I went on the city council, the city council youth, like, events, and I only seen that the Cesar Chavez had some events, and those were dance groups. And then I also seen, and that was for $0, by the way, and I also seen the Aztec dance events, also $0. But those are the only two that I seen, but there was no any, there was no sports events, there was no youth homework programs. So I would like to see more, more events or programs for youth and in a youth center. So, thank you.
Next speaker? I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. You know, you're, yeah, you already called. Okay, if you could reset the clock? Thank you.
I guess, good evening, everybody. I'm here to speak about the Cesar Chavez Gym as well. You know, I'm a young man, I think health is very important, especially since like after this pandemic, a lot of our youth been kept inside, you know, on their phone. That's all they know now. It's pretty annoying. I wish I could see more youth out there getting involved in more sports and stuff like that. And it's, I think now is a good time, I guess, to pay attention to the Cesar Chavez Gym, because the weather, starting to get cold, starting to rain, kids cannot longer like, go outside and play basketball. You can't play sports in the field due to the cold weather, due to the rain. So I think it's important that the Cesar Chavez Gym is more important. I mean, more affordable for the Gilroy's youth, because, like I said, when it's raining outside and there's nowhere to play sports, the only place that is allowed, I guess, is the Cesar Chavez Gym, just because it's closed off. And it's $91 for the public to get in, that's expensive. And the location that it's at, it's on the east side, east side being more prominent area of high-risk youth. And I know, being a high-risk youth, it's hard to even get 20 bucks, let alone 91, to even go enjoy activities that I think is really important. And I just, I like to have, or I like to mention that to the city council, to take that into consideration. It's raining, nowhere to go play sports other than Cesar Chavez Gym, it's not affordable. Even for a nonprofit organization, it's 51 an hour, which is pretty crazy, but more so 91, way worse. So please take that into consideration, to lower the price, to make it more affordable for our youth and for our community. Because, yeah, the parents pay for it, but not all parents can pay for it. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker, I think?
There's three more, Madam Mayor. There's Bea Santos.
Would the others please come to the front row if you're still going to speak?
Marty Estrada and Sally Armanderos.
Marty already, oh, no, you spoke on the last thing. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Isabella Santos, and I'm here to give my opinion on where the youth centers should be. On 10th Street, there's a Wells Fargo behind, no, there's a Wells Fargo, but there's like a little, not a little, a big lot. That would be great, like, for a spot for youth center, because like, there's schools right there, there's food, it's walking distance, and there's also apartments there, so like, there's a lot of youth. And I see them walking, like, when I get out of work or when I go to work. There's, this would be beneficial because it's the ideal spot for youth and their families. I know a lot of youth, when they get out of school, they go home to their parents gone, either still at work or running errands or something. I know when I was a youth, like, I would go home and my mom or my, I don't have my dad in my life, but I'd go home and my mom wasn't there, so like, I would have to cook for myself or for my brother. That's also like another good thing, and that could be in the youth center, if there was like meals or something, or snacks even for the youth. But the youth who don't have, like, their parents home with them, they go out and look for like trouble and stuff, saying that for me. But that would be good if we had that there. Also, sorry, this gives the benefit of the youth not being in the streets. This will become an advantage of the city's cooperation to better our youth incarceration rates. I believe that incarceration would go down highly if we had this youth center. Not only that, but the spot is big enough, would be big enough to host like activities and stuff for them. And it's good enough for outside sports and enrichments. This gives the benefits of the youth not being in the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker?
Once again, city council members and mayor, just want to bring out to your attention, the Parks and Recs in Gilroy has been gutted. You guys laid off for whatever reason, COVID, whatever, a lot of the staff, is my understanding from the city. Who operates Parks and Recs on the behalf of the constituents that's gutted? You cannot have a Parks and Recs gutted and think that you're going to provide programming to the constituents and the youth of that city. If you look, compare apples to apples and oranges, if you look at a bigger city, San Jose has a robust Parks and Recs. They're not laying off staff, they're hiring staff. So how is it that here in Gilroy, you gutted your Parks and Recs staffing? You say that you have programming, and I appreciate Mr. Hilton's comment that the report is that it's not a youth center. But how do you have that? And I would appreciate also Armanderos, Rebecca, for bringing out this inventory. But how do you have a Parks and Recs operational when you're gutted? How are you going to provide these programs to these youth? See, that's a facade. I think that's not, that's a, that's a very bad thing to represent as a city, to say something that you're providing to youth and yet you're not doing that. Let's take Cesar Chavez. You charge the community $91. You charge a nonprofit $51 an hour. Is that correct? So why is that? Why is the city of Gilroy providing a fee waiver to these groups? Why isn't it free? Why isn't the city absorbing that cost? If the object is to support youth in this city, why not make a lot of these services free? You can get money elsewhere, you can get money through different ways. For example, mayor, you mentioned about Caltrain. You know how to get quick money, real fast? Put her under climate, there's a lot of climate money. Joe Biden signed $50 billion. We can get climate money to operate those trains and make it available through that tax. But there's a lot of money elsewhere we can find to keep these open, free to the public. And I think it's a disservice for this city, for these council members here, not all of them, but those that think that you are having something great for youth. And that needs to be looked upon and says, hey, man, we need to change the status quo. We need to support our youth. If you don't give lip service, don't say it on paper, so let's do something about it. And that's what I would suggest for this council member, this sitting council members, to think and reflect about, what is it that you're really offering the youth? If the youth are getting arrested at a high rate here in Gilroy, higher than San Jose zip codes, what does that tell you? There's no services here. There's no services here. You got a Parks and Recs who's gutted? Who's doing the work? Nobody's doing the work. Think about that. Thank you.
All right, now one more?
Sally Armanderos.
All right.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm Sally Armanderos. I came here to talk about the youth center. But in the meantime, I wanted to address the mayor. Mayor, every time that an issue that maybe not to your liking comes up, you try to minimize the community wanting to speak, when according to the Gilroy guidelines, we're entitled to do so. And you do this at every single meeting, unless it's someone that you know, then you're okay with it. At the last meeting, it was very disrespectful when that senior said, who was walking up here to give her opinion. And you got so frustrated, you said, oh, she's walking. And you can look at the, at the meeting that went by, you got all frustrated and said, oh, but the next speaker, come on, she's taking too long. That's disrespect. We seniors deserve respect. We as community members deserve respect. We as community members deserve to be heard. Having told you that, maybe you can, you know, think about what you do. Now I'll talk about the youth center. My concern is that Gilroy does not have a youth center. Everybody here has voiced it, everybody knows, you know, and the rest of the council members know. When are you gonna, when is this council going to do something about it? You know, we have, if you look at the, yeah, go ahead and look at the clock. Yeah, I could see it here too, it's 1:36, because I saw you observing it. I'm sorry I'm taking your time. Maybe I'll just stand here and do nothing so that your time can go through, but I'm not here to do that. Gilroy needs a youth center, and you need to pay respect to the people that live in this community. You get that? Don't be making faces at me. Either way, the youth center needs to be built, a big center that involves the whole community. Like someone already mentioned, some of the youth centers here are used for, the so-called youth centers are used for other activities, which is great, because the Gilroy community does need other activities. However, to call it a youth center and post it on social media or post it on the Gilroy Recreation Guide that these are free services, that is just not true. So try to respect your public and try to tell the public what's really going on out there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item six, future council initiated agenda items. All right, item seven, consent calendar. Now here, I know Councilmember Tovar has told me in advance that he would like to pull 7.4. I'd like everyone to know that the only reason 7.4 is on the consent calendar is because at the October 3 meeting, it was on the regular agenda, where the council was unanimous in asking staff to come back with a resolution. Okay, so knowing that he wants to probably pull that, I'm going to, we're going to deal with the others. Okay, the other items first. So do we have any public comments for the rest of the consent calendar?
With the exception of 7.4, no.
Right, the exception of 7.4, no. Okay, then would anyone like to make a motion on the items on consent other than 7.4? A second, does it need to be a roll call vote?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Councilmember Armanderos?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lino Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right, those are all unanimous. And so now, 7.4 is City of Gilroy recognition of Cesar Chavez Day, March 31st, as an observed holiday. Councilmember Tovar, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. I'm going to read a statement I put together, so bear with me. As many of you know, today, the City of Gilroy City Council votes to adopt an important consent calendar resolution to make Cesar Chavez Day a recognized city holiday. I believe this is a tremendous day in our city, and I'm honored to have Cesar Chavez's grandson, Andres Chavez, here with us today. So thank you for being here. Celebrating this holiday is an important way to honor the legacy of Cesar Chavez. He was an inspirational leader whose important work has touched the lives of many in our community, including myself and my family. As a first-generation son of immigrant parents, I saw firsthand the struggles that they went through to try and provide for our family. I remember times as children, we worked picking apricots and other fruits to make ends meet, so I understand the sacrifices that we had to make in order to have a better life here. Cesar is a source of inspiration to me and many others because he led by example. He understood the struggles of migrant workers and knew it was up to him to do something about it. He took his passion for the cause and fumbled it into action that brought international attention to farm workers and secured their rights to unites. He built relationships with his community, worked across multicultural lines, and brought people together to bring about transformational change. These are the values that have influenced me in my mission to serve my community, my entire community as a public servant. I am proud to have championed this resolution for this holiday so that his legacy is preserved and continues to inspire our future generations. Finally, I also want to thank my fellow council members for their support on this resolution and for being part of making Cesar Chavez a city holiday for the city of Gilroy. And I look forward, if it does pass, I look forward to leading a celebration on March 31st of 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have public, sorry, public comment on 7.4?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have three speaker cards. First speaker is Diane Ortiz, followed by Sally Armanderos, followed by Andres Chavez.
Good evening, council members and community. My name is Diane Ortiz, I am the CEO of the Youth Alliance. And the Youth Alliance has been serving Gilroy for a number of years. We primarily serve young people and Latino families in the city of Gilroy. Multicultural organization, but the majority folks that we do serve are Latinx. And so this is an important celebration for the city of Gilroy. And I'm just here to say that I really do think that it's a wonderful thing to be honoring Cesar Chavez Day as a city holiday, especially as Gilroy is almost 60% Latinx and is almost doubled that of Santa Clara County. It's an important opportunity to commemorate and highlight such an important and significant leader and champion for justice in the city of Gilroy. And I just want to say thank you so much for supporting this resolution.
Thank you. All right, next speaker?
Yes, as a former farm worker myself, and my family having worked the fields of Gilroy, Hollister, all this area, I want to thank the city council for acknowledging this man. This man who made such a great change for those essential workers that feed us every day. His sacrifices, which at the end caused him his life, gave the farm worker hope and some relief of the inhumane treatment that was, that they were working under. Such things as the essential, everyday things that we need, such like bathrooms, water, breaks, you know, things that the farm worker did not have until the movement of Cesar Chavez came. He made such a change for us humans, and we still have it, and we still have the farm workers out there, but at least they have a little, they're given a little dignity where they can at least have a bathroom to go to, to use, you know, a little bit of water and a break, you know. Thank you, Cesar Chavez, and thank you, city council, for acknowledging the man that made such a change to the people that keep us alive. Que viva Cesar Chavez!
Next speaker?
Andres Chavez, followed by Alicia Hernandez.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. As you heard from Councilmember Tovar, my name is Andres Chavez. I'm one of Helen and Cesar Chavez's 31 grandkids, also the executive director at the National Chavez Center. First and foremost, on behalf of the Chavez family and the National Chavez Center, we thank you all for choosing my daughter, Cesar, in this way. You know, when my daughter was alive, he didn't like to receive recognition publicly because he knew that there was a lot of Cesar Chavezes out there who sacrificed so much and gave so much, but whose names are lodged in the history. but whose names are lodged in the last of history. So we accept today of Mythatha Caesar. But on behalf of all those who sacrificed their lives to make this world a little bit better, especially our farmworkers. So we thank you all again, and as we say in the Farmworker Movement, se se puede.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Hello, my name is Alicia Hernandez, and I am a Realtor here in Gilroy. And I'm also president of the National Hispanic Organization of Real Estate Associates. And we are just really honored and excited to hear about this opportunity of having a Cesar Chavez Day. It hits me because my mom and dad marched with him. So it's just like, when I heard about that, I said, wow, you guys are amazing. So, City Council, we all thank you for such an amazing opportunity and let's hope we get that down, March 31st. So thank you, guys. Thanks.
Okay, that concludes public comment.
No more speakers, Madam Mayor.
So then, need a motion?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Councilmember Tovar made a motion to approve item 7.4 and seconded by Councilmember Almoderos. And can this be?
Roll call vote, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Almoderos?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lino Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Okay. Sorry y'all had to wait so long for that. There we go. Okay, item eight, bids and proposals. We have none. Item nine is public hearings, 9.1. Proposed, approved, a proposed tentative map to divide 778 First Street into two parcels. I believe Sharon is gonna be giving us that report. Before she does, I need to ask council, I, some people seem to be missing, for ex parte communications. I don't know what to do about the ones who have left. Okay, well, one who's left. Okay, Councilmember Bracco, anything to disclose? Councilmember Almoderos?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Marks? I, I spoke with one resident who lives nearby, did not learn anything new, and none. Okay, well, we'll proceed. Okay, go ahead, Sharon.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the community. Tonight, we have a tentative map application for your consideration. So the site under consideration is located at the commercial center at the southeast corner of Ren Avenue and First Street. The new Starbucks building, which is the one with the blue star there, has been under construction on a vacant pad. The applicant has applied for a tentative map to create separate parcels for the existing building and the new building so that the Starbucks building will be on its own parcel. And there's no change in development. So here on the map, you can see the new layout. And you can see that proposed property line located down about the middle of the site access drive aisle. And it goes from First Street to the back of the property to create a separate parcel. When we do a commercial lot split, even though they have shared parking arrangements, we do make sure that each parcel can independently park and they can also share park. There will also be reciprocal access easement agreements across the properties. In order to maintain appropriate access among the parcels, there will also be a dedication of reciprocal driveway ingress and egress easement between the parcels. And this is all included in the proposed resolution for council tonight. So staff has analyzed the application. The map complies with subdivision standards. The resulting parcels comply with site standards of the general plan and zoning designations. And again, there's no change in development with this application. The proposed subdivision is exempt from CCRA environmental review because it is a minor lot split. On October 6th, the planning commission recommended approval of the proposed tentative map to the City Council. So staff's recommendation tonight is for council to adopt the resolution approving a tentative map to subdivide the property located at 778 First Street into two parcels. Staff be happy to answer any questions. Our senior planner, Craig Tamanini, is here tonight. And also the applicant's representative is here tonight also to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, does anyone have questions of staff? Okay, I have one, Sharon. The, the two parcels, saying that, the two parcel numbers, I should say, those are the would-be parcel numbers if this goes through, right? Or are there already, right now, that whole site that includes the Walgreens, is that two parcels or three right now?
I believe the Walgreens is a separate parcel, but the two buildings, the corner one and the Starbucks building-
The corner one on Ren?
Yes, correct. Those are the two being looked at and to-
Being, to be, so right now that is one. Right now, that is all one parcel?
Correct. Let me go back to this map. Yeah, so it's this whole area, in the whole boundary-
Right.
And with this new lot line, that's the one down the middle of the drive aisle, that's gonna create those two parcels.
Thank you. It was just, for some reason, seeing parcel numbers made me think they're already, if parcel numbers are already there, then they're already two separate lots. But they're not, right? These are the numbers that they-
Creating the-
Right, it's creating, and you just have the parcel numbers in advance of creating the parcels?
No, this is the proposed map.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I didn't realize that you got parcel numbers on a proposal. Why, why is this confusing? Why does it say APN 808 12035 and 036? Because those are the numbers it will be.
That's correct.
Okay. Right, not that they are. I'm sorry, I don't mean to, okay, okay. So what is it, right now, two parcels in that whole block would be three. You'd have the Walgreens as one, and then you'd have two.
Correct, yes. And Starbucks will be on its own.
Right, right. No, I get it. Sorry, I'm slow. Okay, no other questions, so then I'll- Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I, okay. Rebecca, Almoderos.
So what implications would that have in terms of potential future developments? Would that, splitting them into two, open the door for an increased, an increased opportunity for developments or like a greater number of developments on the parcels? Or does that not implicate anything? Does it not make any changes to how many parcels they could, how many businesses they could potentially have on that parcel?
Yeah, so commercial lot splits like this usually will provide the property owner with flexibility so they can respond to changing market conditions. So this kind of supports the business environment so that they can respond to changing, you know, market situations. And this proposal is not changing what is being developed. It's not changing any of the uses on the site. It's not changing the operation of the site or, you know, the function of any of those buildings or uses.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Marks?
So when you say the parcel goes to Ren, then we're talking about Union Bank, that parcel, correct?
The court, correct.
So then you are, okay, so then you are just separating where Starbucks is from the Union Bank Center, right?
Yes, each building will be on its own lot, correct. But there will be reciprocal agreements so that the access to the lot, basically nothing physical is changing, really. It's more of a legal map.
So will there be any impact at all to the neighbors by splitting these two lots?
There will be no changes to the development, so there will be no impact via this tentative map.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, then I'll go to public comment.
Yes, Madam Mayor, would you mind opening the public hearing?
Oh, yeah. It's a public hearing. So it's 7:38, and it is open.
Yes, I have two speaker cards. That is, first is James Polo, followed by Amanda, I apologize, Mucie Verdel.
Yeah, so I've been here before regarding the Starbucks and how the, the drive-through is going to be facing residential. Its lights will be going towards residential and it's really close next to residential. And there's an easement, when you looked at the actual parcel division, where they're going to split the road that goes towards a gate in two, into two parcels. And there's a fence there that basically is going, is our emergency access route for emergency vehicles into our HOA, into our complex. And right now, the fire department says, okay, we're installing a drive-through that's gonna block half of it. And now they're saying, okay, we're gonna split the parcel in half. And now suddenly, half of it's gonna be owned by Starbucks side and half of it's gonna be owned by another parcel. So now we have this situation where who do we contact regarding the, the gate? And who's gonna be responsible for ensuring that the gate protects the residents from, you know, the, the high beams of the cars or the, the lights of the cars, which is also codes that they have to address to make sure there's no lights on our property. Which, by the way, we're the only drive-through that, that's actually facing towards residences. All of the rest are all facing away, so that all the lights are facing away from them and you can't, and also the, the vehicles aren't, you know, really close, so you can't hear them. But in this situation, now they're splitting it in half. And so I'm just saying, why can't they just move the parcel just a little bit over so that the whole street is either part of one parcel or part of the other? And not split right in the middle where that fence is. And that's, that's my primary concern. And I've already attended the building committee and they said it was, the person who spoke, I believe, was John Biggs, I think, or Briggs. And he said, you know, it's up to the landowner to do whatever he wants with his property. And the building committee just said, there's nothing we can do, and passed it through. And so now I'm coming again to the council to say, hey, you know, look at where it is. It's right in the middle of that street. Push it over to the left maybe a little bit more, move it to the right. Don't have it right in the middle of that gate, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, I'm Amanda Mucie Verdel with Hannah Burnett. I'm representing the ownership group. I just want to make one clarification on the APN numbers. So those are just assessors' parcel numbers that can be, so anybody could elect requests of the assessor, hey, I want to have a different assessment on this piece of property versus the other people, portion of the property. So it's assessors, for assessors' purposes only, they're, it's not legal. So, so those will be the APN numbers at the end, but, but it is one legal parcel, including Starbucks to Union Bank. Where we put the property line is kind of arbitrary. There's process easements throughout the property. If, if, if you so choose, you suggest us to move the location of the property line, I don't think it's gonna be a big issue. But it's not, because there's so many overlays of CCNRs and agreements and right in the middle of that is an ingress egress easement, a formal ingress egress easement, that where we put it, it doesn't really matter. So, but we're not furthering development of the property. We're not doing anything like that. We're just doing this for financial, or not me, the ownership group's doing it for financial purposes only. So if there are any other questions, I will be happy to answer them.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Bracco.
Yes, so on this easement, neither party can use it, right? They can't park cars in it or anything, correct?
Yeah, you can't park cars in it. It's just, can you bring up the map so it makes a little bit more sense? But, so this easement down here is, is the easement that everyone's talking about. So, you know, you can't park cars in it.
And who, who's responsible for the gate? That would be the HOA, right?
It would be, actually, I don't know who's responsible for the gate. I would think it would be the HOA. And probably there's an agreement between the HOA and the, the commercial group.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have another public speaker?
That was her, Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay. So maybe, Sharon, maybe you want to come back. I, I think we might all be having this, this question then. I mean, if, if the property line is going down the center of, of a, of a piece of, of what will then be two parcels, right, instead of on the edge? I mean, the, the easement is for what purpose? So that you can travel upon it, correct? It's not for parking. It's so that cars can travel, right?
Yes, and there are, and Amanda can come up to expand on this, but-
Okay.
There are several different type of agreements so that basically all of the ingress, egress, site access will remain as this. You know, whether there's a property line or not.
Right.
And in fact, you see this in many places. So, because, you know, you physically don't see the property line, but you can even go to a really large shopping center and it's actually multiple parcels, you know, in that whole shopping center.
You just don't physically see it. And it's these agreements as making sure the whole site is gonna flow, you know, how it's physically built. So what, what is, what is the issue as, as you see it with a gate? What, what, I'm, I'm not understanding what the relevance is of, of a gate into a homeowners association. How, not what the relevance of the gate is, what the relevance of, of a, a property with the easement on two different parcels? What, what is the relevance of that to that gate?
I think the gate happened prior to my arrival, so I'm probably not the best person to explain about that.
Okay, Craig, do you know? Yeah.
Craig will come up.
May, maybe it comes to who's responsible for the gate, because I'm not following why there would be any risk to the homeowners from this.
I, I'll give you a little bit of the background. So this property, the Oaks Commons and the commercial property were originally developed as, by one developer. There was at that time a requirement for an ingress egress easement for emergency vehicles that did not have a gate. Subsequent, at some later time, there was a decision in a request by the HOA to close that off. So the city agreed to that. Fire department said, yeah, we don't really need that as, as a permanent access. You can gate it off. So it was, it was an approval requested by the HOA that was granted by the city to close that off. With this project, they wanted to then use the access easement for a drive-through. At that time, we identified, staff identified that this easement still existed, so we asked them to amend their easement to eliminate the EV component of it. And fire department reviewed that and agreed that, yes, this is no longer necessary as an EV. There's two other access points with this property, so it serves no functional purpose other than, other than access into the property from First Street. That's currently, it's, it's, that's currently its current condition.
Okay.
So if the property line's down the middle, it doesn't change anything. If it's moved to one side or the other, that, that works too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Marks?
I guess for me to vote yes on this, I would really want to be assured that the property line was moved over a little bit, because I just kind of foresee problems in the future on if something goes wrong with the pavement or who's gonna pay for it, who's gonna fix it? Is there gonna be a battle between the two property owners of that land? No, you don't think so? Okay. All right, Sharon would know, or Craig?
Councilmember, there are existing agreements in place on the entire property, all the way down to Walgreens, that assure that that wouldn't happen. So all these property owners, just like many other shopping centers we have in town, including Nob Hill, Safeway, the Gilroy Outlets, those, and others, Gilroy Crossings, those all have individual parcels. That's mainly for financial purposes, but they all have agreements that tie them together. So there's almost like a master HOA for the commercial development. So it's very highly controlled and regulated. And this was looked at carefully by Public Works to make sure that the agreements are in place, that need to be in place. And so when the, if, if the council were to approve the map, which, which we are recommending, the city engineer will review the final map, make sure all of those little pieces are, are nice and tidy and tightened up and in place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Almoderos?
Thank you, Mayor. So we know that a Starbucks drive-through is coming and that many community or neighborhood residents are, are predicting the, the impact that it's gonna have on them in terms of smog, emissions from the cars in line and the lights shining into their neighborhood. So I'm wondering, are there any impacts that could be mitigated with a slight change to this plan or to this recommendation? This recommended map and subdivision that would help, help the residents with what, the impact that they're gonna suffer?
Councilmember, with, with respect to the map, it really, that has no effect on the development pattern or development plan. This is simply drawing a line for creation of a lot for financing purposes only. So at this point, no, the Starbucks approval has been approved under our current codes. And moving forward with respect to that, we're looking at some code amendments that we'll bring back to the commission and council to look at other ways to look at drive-throughs. But for this development, it's, development's been approved and the map is, is simply just drawing a line.
Okay, thank you. All right. You, you would need to fill out a card. And yes, I think we did, did I, I didn't close it, actually.
No, you did not, Madam Mayor.
So you can fill out a card and then, and speak. That's, okay, that, there's a process that everybody has to follow. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Mayor, can you speak? Can you have him?
Yeah.
Why don't you speak and then fill out the card, since we're waiting for you now? Okay? Just introduce yourself, please.
Uh, my name is Philip. I am, uh, uh, I reside in the Oak Commons. So this development is going directly impact a lot of the people in that community. Um, this is my first time here. I'm listening to the public comment, and yet we're having legal counsel representation from the, uh, the parcel owner coming and giving their, their spin on it for minimization.
No legal counsels here.
Okay. Well, representation. Um, I, I don't think all the, all the facts are there. I don't think you're being presented with the entire picture, how it's going to impact that community. So I'm just asking that you hold off on this vote, gather more details and more information, so you can make a better, uh, more informed decision on it's going to impact the community. There's a lot of information that's been received from the Fire Department, the Fire Marshal regarding this. On one hand, they're saying a gate can be there, not really used. On one hand, another hand, they're saying, uh, no, we can't put a wall there because we still need access. So which is it? Can the Fire Marshal decide what it is? Is it something that's an easement that's going to be used for emergency reasons, or is it not? Because a solid wall, which has been discussed with the property owner at the commercial side, i- is an option to put a solid wall there so that the community can actually use that as additional parking or whatnot. But in either way, you're not being presented with all the facts. So I'm just asking for the council to just maybe reconsider, gather more facts before they make a decision on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, do we have any other public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:52. And it comes back to council. Are there any more questions, or does somebody wish to make a motion?
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Of course.
And I don't know if, uh, sure, maybe you can come up. So first question, and thank you for speaking out. In regards to the timing of this vote, maybe this is a question for Leanne. What's, if we were to hold off on this, obviously, I mean, again, depending on what, where everyone stands, what are the consequences if we hold off on this vote today?
Actually, I think Sharon's better equipped to answer that.
Um, yes, thank you for the question. Uh, I don't think there's immediate impact, you know, to the development. Like I said, the, everything physical is continuing as is. Uh, but if the map is approved, then, you know, um, things will be adjusted according to that, um, final map. And it has to be recorded. And Amanda, if, um, she would like to expand on that, please feel free.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Yeah, so my understanding, there's no, I mean, there's, there's no rush to have this approved or not approved. I mean, we still have time, right? I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, I believe.
Okay.
I, I believe that's correct technically, because we haven't made an environmental determination until you decide it's exempt, and that's when the clock starts ticking. So, and I believe Andy can speak further to that if necessary.
Okay. And then-
If, if I may, I think that's correct, what Craig said. The issue, I think, with the timing of it, something like this normally is that the pace of the development and the need to finance the two separate parcels, which is not apparent from the record here. So if, if, uh, maybe Sharon or perhaps the applicants engineer has a thought on that, I think they could explain. Or perhaps not.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
So, Council-
Yeah, thank you. My second part, Sharon, is in regards to, um, this particular item, because I think, uh, the gentleman, the resident there, um, did we, had get public outreach, was there public outreach? Were there meetings for the public to attend? And if so, I mean, I know there was, I'm just saying, just so the, the general public knows, what were some of the outcomes from those, from those meetings?
I can tell you about the public outreach that was done for the planning commission meeting on October 6th and tonight's council meeting. So on October 28th, the project was published in the, uh, notice in the Gilroy Dispatch. Yes, and on the 19th, a notice, the council meeting was mailed to property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. And also, you know, the information, this packet is being available on the city's website. And as far as meetings that were held from the community, I think that was all done prior to the project approval. So just wanted, you know, um, emphasize that tonight, it's just the tentative map application that's in front of you. You know, it's not the project, uh, it's not the development itself, because that was already approved previously.
Right, so the feedback that we heard tonight, so I understand, but I, I, I'm trying to comprehend if we're voting on a tentative map, um, and this is, was shared with the public, the feedback that we got was more in favor or against it? Do you follow what I'm saying? Because again, I want to respect the residents. I mean, I think several of us, or many of us have mentioned that. So I'm, I'm honestly, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I just want to get some more feedback before I can, I can make a sound decision.
Thank you. Councilmember LaRomen Yost?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just one quick question with regard to the access for fire. It was referenced that there was maybe some confusion at the back of the property with regard to either a fence or a wall there. Was there any final determination about that? Is that still an open issue that can be determined by the-
Yeah, I would defer that to Craig, because, you know, the development itself was actually done prior to my arrival.
That's fine, thank you. Craig?
Uh, Councilmember Tovar, um, I'm sorry. LaRomen Yost. Um, I want to get a couple more chances to answer you. So with respect to that gate, there's, there's been private discussion, I understand, between the, the property owner and, and the HOA as far as maybe putting in some other kind of gate, a solid gate, something that would help block lights and provide more privacy. It's not something that's been presented to us. If they do propose a change, we would require a review of it, but, uh, I believe in general, we'd be supportive of that. And I, I don't, uh, you know, if there's questions about the fire access, I can answer them the best I can tonight. But I can say with respect to this map and the prior development, it's been reviewed by all departments, including Fire, Public Works, and others who are more, more expert in those areas than I. Uh, so in our, our understanding and our opinion is this meets all the criteria that's necessary for approval.
Okay, that, that was the answer that I was hoping to hear. So I think that answers that for me. I, I would just ask other council members if there are specific questions, if there's more specific information that, that you're seeking, I would encourage you to specifically call that out.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barco.
Craig, I, I think you answered it, but I want to clarify. If the residents move forward with walling that off, the city's fine with that.
As, as speaking for the planning department, yes. My understanding, based on comments from other departments, is yes. That would, that would be fine.
Councilmember Marks.
So in my mind, this is just a parcel split.
Yes.
Okay? And I kind of get the feeling that the residents might think that somehow if we hold this up, it's going to change what's going in there. And that's not what's going to happen, correct? It's just a parcel split.
It's, it's simply a parcel split, creating a separate parcel that can be financed separately. And that's really, that's really it.
And it might be a fear that there might be another drive-through coming in on this parcel split, but-
This parcel split ha- has absolutely no, no relationship with the development potential for the site. That remains unchanged.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. See, um, you're both done, right? Okay. So, yeah, I was going to kind of repeat what was just said there, but you just did it, Councilmember Marks. This is just a, a parcel split. Um, it, it has gone before the planning commission. It was, I know, I watched that meeting and I, I, I did what I needed to do to prepare with what I needed to understand for this. I just got a little confused on the parcel numbers already being predetermined. But, um, otherwise, I, I personally don't see any benefit in, in postponing something that, yeah. So would anyone like to make a motion? To adopt, to approve? Okay. Actually, to adopt a resolution, that's what this is, right? Adopt a resolution. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Barco, seconded by Councilmember LaRomen Yost, and this needs to be a roll call vote.
Councilmember Armandares?
I'll abstain.
Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRomen Yost?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
No.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Um, Andy, can you, um, explain when we are allowed to abstain?
Generally, you're not allowed to abstain unless there's a personal conflict issue. Normal rules of procedure do not allow an abstention for a desire simply not to cast a vote. Because if we did, then nothing would ever get done at councils. So if you want to state a reason for, I'm not saying you can't abstain, but normally it's done because of a conflict or some disqualifying aspect of the project.
Well, I've, I've never heard a, a vote on a, or an abstention from a vote be questioned before. So I'd like to know why I'm being questioned in particular.
You, you, actually, I questioned it before with Andy, and he didn't say anything before, so now I'm asking again, because I'm wondering, if I don't want people to know what I think about something, why wouldn't I just abstain?
As I said, generally, the rules of parliamentary procedure do not allow an abstention simply because someone doesn't want to cast a vote. Because that's the job you have here is to cast votes. Unless there was some, some actual conflict or other particular reason why that's impossible.
I don't have a conflict, but I'd like my vote to stick, to remain as an abstention.
Well, I don't think the council can force you, and I can certainly not, to do that.
I know.
But that is, that is the normal rule of parliamentary procedure.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we ever end up with too many people wanting to abstain, then we just deal with that problem when, when it occurs. Okay, all right. Okay, moving on to item 10, unfinished business. We have none. Item 11, introduction of new business, annual review and adoption of the city's investment policy. Harjo, you are on.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the community. Harjo Tsangam, the city's finance director. I'll be presenting the item before you, which is the annual review and adoption of the city's investment policy. Based on the California, uh, code as well as the city's, uh, current, uh, policy, we're required to bring back a statement of the investment policy to the city council annually for review and adoption. Uh, the policy, uh, outlines basically, uh, a investment program, how the city's idle or surplus funds are to be invested. And, uh, they are to be invested with three primary objectives. Uh, safety being one, we are to, uh, invest in the safest securities that are available. Two, maintaining sufficient liquidity to meet the city's cash flow needs. And three is attaining the maximum yields possible, uh, while being consistent with the first two, uh, objectives. With this year's review, we're, uh, we're recommending about four, uh, changes throughout the policy. One is, uh, clarifying that the city does indeed pool, um, its, uh, funds from various, uh, various funds for investment purposes, and this allows the city to maximize the investment earnings and, and provides for efficiencies when, um, uh, investments are being priced. Overall administration of the program as well. The second item we're recommending is, uh, to change is the benchmark slash performance standard. The current standard, um, outlined in there is a six-month Treasury bill. We're recommending the, uh, to update the language to utilize a Treasury bill term that's more, uh, most closely corresponds with the city's portfolio's weighted average. The third is just some language cleanup, um, for the investment standard. Removing outdated language, uh, specifically the term prudent man rule. Updating that to the prudent investment, invest, investor standard language, which is the primary prudence in the California government code. Uh, last but not least is the delegation of the authority. The, uh, this section currently allows the council to delegate the authority to the city treasurer, which is also the, um, the finance director, myself, for a one-year period. And we're recommending that, uh, this delegation be made one time until revoked or as opposed to the one-year period. The council would still, of course, uh, receive the policy for review every, every year as required by the policy as well as the California government code. The recommendation before you is to adopt the resolution, which updates the investment policy until we bring it back to you for, uh, next year.
Thank you.
That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? All right, any public comment?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, no public comment. So we need, um, a motion to adopt a resolution establishing the city's updated investment policy. Okay, moved by Councilmember LaRomen Yost, seconded by Councilmember Tovar, but it's a roll call vote. Okay.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRomen Yost?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, 11.2. I understand, um, Sharon Goe is going to give this report, and she's going to do one report for 11.2, 11.3, and 11.4. But we will then come back to each of them individually for questions and public comment. Where is Sharon? Oh. All right, Hippo, you're on, start it.
Okay. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Let's get after this one. So we will be introducing ordinances, um, item 11.2, 11.3, 11.4, which is the code adoptions with amendments. So let me just set this up right. So this is just the, um, just shows you a timeline of the triennial code adoption process that we go through every three years to adopt the, uh, building codes that the state of California, um, adopts the base code for us. And so we go out through, throughout from 2020 to 2023, when we'll adopt the proposed 2022 building codes. And so we start in 2020, in 2021, we go through public review, uh, the code advisory committees, they join and they say, hey, let's make these amendments or these proposed amendments at these regional levels. And then in about the middle of 2022, we start going, getting into the publication period. In July, we pub, we, they publish the codes that we then amend or adopt. And so as it states there, the model codes are updated every three years. Um, the codes are updated to improve safety, sustainability, and resilience of our buildings. Sometimes incorporating new technologies and designs and construction methods. Sharon, you want to come on in? I warmed up the mic for you.
Good job, yeah. Thank you, Hippo Lito. Sorry, I had to use the restroom quickly. Is it okay if I start over? Because this is not one-
Go ahead.
Okay, all right, sorry. Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the community. Um, so we're here before you tonight to introduce the new building codes for adoption. Um, so this presentation is going to cover the three items on your agenda, 11.2, 3, and 4. So here's the co-cycle expressed as the timeline, and this is a very simplifying timeline. If you go to the Building Standards Commission website, you will see a very detailed timeline that really maps out the entire rule-making process. And it's going to show every step, you know, every public comment period, every co-advisory commission hearing, every Building Standards Commission hearing. During each co-cycle, an extensive public participation process takes place. And all of these efforts, um, during this last co-cycle led to the publication of the new 2022 California codes in July this year. So between July 2022 and January 2023, that is the statutally required 180-day period between the publication day and the effective date. And on, um, January 1st, 2023, the new 2022 codes will become effective statewide. The 180-day period allows for education and training. Now, our team and building departments across the state have been really busy, taking lots of training, and this will continue well into next year. And so are our counterparts in industries such as, you know, architects and structural engineers, electrical engineers, you know, mechanical engineers, et cetera. This 180-day period also allows for the local adoption and filing process, which is what we're going through right now. And model codes are updated every three years to improve safety, sustainability, and resiliency. They are also updated to incorporate new technology, new design methods, and new construction methods. And every three years, the California Building Standards Commission adopts the new model codes, including California amendments by the state agencies, and publishes the California Building Standards Code, uh, which is a whole set of codes. And this set of codes is referred to as Title 24 of California Code of Regulations. These are the codes that govern the design and construction of buildings, facilities, and associated- facilities, and associated equipment throughout California. So right now, we're adopting the 2022 codes to replace the 2019 codes. So here are the procedures for adopting codes by reference. These procedures are set forth in the government code, so they're a little bit different from the usual procedures. When adopting codes by reference, the first reading is introducing ordinances and then setting a public hearing for adopting ordinances. So that's what we're doing tonight. Public hearing notices are published in accordance with government code. The second reading, scheduled for November 21st, is the public hearing for adoption of the ordinances. Health and safety code provides for the local amendment process. Local jurisdictions can make amendments to the California codes, and we must make express findings that those local amendments are reasonably necessary because of local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. The adoption ordinances, including the local amendments and findings, have to be filed with state agencies. And the new 2022 codes with local amendments will become effective on January 1st, 2023. In our proposed adoption by reference, here are the codes included that you see on this slide. The code titles in the blue color, those are covered under item 11.2. The one that's in green, which is the Green Building Standards Code, that one is under item 11.3. And the fire code, which I put in red, that's under item 11.4. The photo to the left shows the 2022 codes. But the codes also reference many other standards that we have to implement as part of the new codes. So those are not in the photo. And in fact, I want to say, at least three co-cycles ago, those were in hard copies, but they've gotten so complicated and there are so many standards, you know, we can only get them electronically. And the photo below just shows a comparison between the 1994 codes and the 2022 codes. This just demonstrates that codes get improved, they become more thorough, they incorporate new methods for design and construction, so they become larger and more complicated. Now, staff has proposed some local amendments to be adopted as part of the code adoption. And staff participates in regional efforts in reviewing and developing local amendments. In the case of building codes, staff participates in the tri-chapter Uniform Code Committee, which is made up of co-professionals from the wider Bay Area. And we work together to enhance regional consistency in the application and interpretation of codes. In the case of fire code, staff participates in the Santa Clara County Fire Marshal's Fire Code Work Group, which is a subcommittee of the Santa Clara County Fire Chiefs Association. Many of the proposed amendments to the fire code were developed in cooperation with those other cities and fire districts within Santa Clara County. These amendments, along with the findings that support them, are included in the proposed ordinances before you tonight. And some of the amendments need to be carried forward into the next co-cycle to maintain the current level of protection, such as the proposed amendments in the building code and fire code. Those local amendments address fire safety, life safety, and seismic safety. And just want to clarify a little bit about the reach code. Reach code is not a defined term. It refers to local amendments to the energy code and/or local amendments to the Green Building Standards Code. At the August 1st, 2022 council meeting, staff received council direction regarding reach codes. And council direction was to adopt what is already contained in the energy code and none of the amendments. And this will allow for mixed-fuel buildings for new construction. And for the Green Building Standards Code, council direction was to adopt local amendments that would enhance electric vehicle charging and bicycle parking. So those amendments are part of the proposed ordinance in front of you tonight. Adopting the 2022, 2022 new codes with local amendments will ensure that buildings and structures in Gilroy will safeguard the public's health, safety, and general welfare. Therefore, staff recommends that the council introduce the proposed ordinances, adopting the new codes with amendments, and set a public hearing on November 21st. And actually have three slides that correspond to the three ordinances. So I'll go back to the first one here. And the title of each code to be adopted by reference has to be specified in the title of the ordinance according to state law. So that's why these are a little bit long. But we can read them when council gets to the motion. But for now, that concludes the presentation, and staff will be happy to answer any questions. And as you know, our building marshal, Hippo Lito Omos, is here. Our deputy fire marshal, Jonathan Craig, is here too.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all of that. Okay, so council will now take these one at a time. So we'll start with 11.2. Does anyone have any specific questions on 11.2 before I go to public comment? Okay, do we have any public comment on 11.2?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one speaker card, and that's Ron Kirkish.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, council, community. The Green Building Code, I noticed that it mentioned the bicycle and another objective. I'm just concerned, when you talk about green building codes and stuff like that, we have communities like San Jose and even Morgan Hill where they've introduced green building issues like natural gas cannot be used and there only electricity or green energy. I, I'd like to flush that out if possible. Does that include that are any existing new buildings have to be electrical only? The community should have a right to know that if that's what we're going to be voting on. Thank you.
I think probably for the record, we should note that that's really a comment on 11.3 on Green Building Codes, that we can incorporate your comment into that hearing.
Thank you, Andy.
Without having to repeat it.
Okay. Any other public comment?
No other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so I'd like to make a comment on 11.2 because it's just a clarifying comment for, for anybody, including the public. And that is that 11.2 is, when we had our council meeting on, in August of 2022, we asked that new construction have mixed fuel. And that is incorporated in 11.2, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Actually, I'm going to, well, actually, this slide, yes, as I mentioned, the codes in blue are covered under item 11.2.
Right.
And then on...
Which includes the mixed-use fuel for new construction.
Yeah, sorry, let me go back again. And the, the codes in blue, right, which is 11.2, includes the 2022 California Energy Code that you see on the upper right.
Right, but people don't realize that that includes the mixed fuel.
Correct. Yes, on this next slide where we clarify, if you adopt the 2022 Energy Code without local reach code amendment, which is council's direction from August 1st, that will continue to allow mixed-fuel buildings for new construction.
Exactly.
Correct.
Okay, so that's 11.2. We'll talk about 11.3 when we get to 11.3, but that's 11.2. So that's what we are, that's what's on the floor right now. Does anybody have a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive the first reading for 11.2?
So move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember La Romoños. Ty, do you have to do something here?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just have to do the roll call vote on this.
Okay.
Councilmember Amadérez?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lider Muñoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. And now, do you have to read the title?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy amending sections 6.1, 6.6, and 6.7 of chapter 6 of the Gilroy Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2022 California Building Code, 2022 California Residential Code, 2022 California Electric Code, 2022 California Mechanical Code, 2022 California Plumbing Code, 2022 California Energy Code, 2022 California Historical Building Code, 2022 California Existing Building Code, 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, and 2021 International Swim Pool and Spa Code with amendments.
Okay. So now, do we need a second motion to adopt the ordinance instead of public hearing?
You need, you need a motion to, to introduce the ordinance that he just read, the title of which he just read.
So we need a motion?
Okay, so move.
Second.
It's not on my thing.
That's what, it should be.
Okay. Okay, so motion made by Councilmember Marks for whatever it's supposed to be, and seconded by Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
Right, and for the record, the motion was to introduce the ordinance with the title that the city clerk just read.
Right.
Councilmember Amadérez?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lider Muñoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks? Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, does that conclude 11.2, or is there another one?
Well, now you should have a motion to set the public hearing.
Okay.
That doesn't require a roll call, that can simply be a motion.
Okay, but I need a motion.
Yes.
So I need, I need a motion to adopt the ordinance and set...
No, 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 no. To set the public hearing on November 21, 2022, for the adoption of the ordinance pursuant to the government code section.
All right, so... Yeah, it's number three on the slide.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Marks, seconded by Councilmember Tovar again? No.
Braco.
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 Okay.
Councilmember Amadérez?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lider Muñoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes.
So that concludes section 11.2, item 11.2.
Okay, so I'm moving now to 11.3. Okay, and so I'm going to go to public comment unless anybody has a question up here. Do we have any public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then closing public comments. So now, this one, right, I'm glad you have this slide up, right? So this one is for the inclusion of what, the two things that we did that this council heard and adopted or asked for at the August 1st meeting, that new construction be retrofitted, I guess is the right word, for EV chargers, and that multifamily housing have bike parking.
Yes, with those enhanced requirements.
So those, those things are included in 11.3.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so...
The first motion would be a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive first reading beyond the title.
Councilmember Amadérez?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco? Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lider Muñoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes.
So I'll read the title if you would.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy amending sections 6.6 and 6.7 of chapter 6 of the Gilroy Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2022 California Green Building Standards Code with amendments.
Now we need a motion to introduce that ordinance.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Braco and seconded by Councilmember Marks to introduce the ordinance and set a public hearing.
I have a friendly amendment that I'd like to state.
Okay.
And it has nothing to do with the ordinance. The friendly amendment, if accepted and discussed, would staff to bring back in early 2023 an analysis of recent reach policy development on what our region has implemented. Many regions and jurisdictions have implemented reach codes tonight at the same time we are. And what state and federal actions that may affect local policy, including funding streams like the Federal Inflation Reduction Act and State Climate Budget, those will be coming through early next year. And as climate change is moving fast, by the time 2023 rolls around, there might be lots of changes for us to evaluate and not wait another three years for building code adoption. And I can clarify any of that, or if anybody's open for discussion on that.
Okay, so that motion was made by Councilmember Braco, right? No, who made the motion?
He did.
Yeah, that's what I'm, no, I'm saying the original, the motion's on the floor is by Councilmember Braco. He's asking if you want to amend your motion.
No, no, I'm just, this is a friendly amendment, that's all it is. I'm not amending, I'm not, yeah.
Now, a friendly amendment is a request to the maker of the motion and the seconder to change the motion that they have made and seconded. So the mayor's request is appropriate.
Okay, so the answer was no? Okay.
But who?
Okay.
Okay.
So we need a vote?
And the vote is on the motion to introduce the ordinance, that, the title of which was just read.
Right.
Sorry, Mayor, I'm just confused. So we're voting without the friendly amendment, right?
Correct.
So if it doesn't...
We're voting with the original, right, if it doesn't pass, then you start over. That goes without saying.
Okay.
Right. Okay.
Councilmember Amadérez? Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lider Muñoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
And Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, okay, so that was unanimous.
Yeah, and now we just need a quick motion to set the public hearing.
Okay, they couldn't have been done together, they couldn't have been combined.
For 11.2, we did them separately, so let's keep doing that just for consistency.
Okay, I guess my agenda's had them combined both times, but, okay.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for November 21st.
Second.
Okay, made by Councilmember Braco and seconded by Councilmember Marks.
Councilmember Amadérez?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lider Muñoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, okay, that's unanimous. 11.4, any public comment?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. So again, it's needing a motion to read the ordinance by title only and waive the first reading. Unless there's discussion. Does anyone want to make a motion to read the ordinance? This is 11.4. Moved by Councilmember La Romoños, seconded by Councilmember Braco.
Councilmember Amadérez?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lider Muñoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Gilroy amending sections 10.9 and 10.10 of the chapter 10 of the Gilroy Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2022 California Fire Code with amendments.
All right, thank you. Okay, so keeping these things separate again, now we need a motion to introduce the ordinance pursuant to government code section.
Introduce the ordinance, the title of which was just read would be adequate.
Okay. I'll make the motion if nobody else wants to make it. Is there a second? Okay, I'll make the motion, seconded by Councilmember Braco.
Councilmember Amadérez?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lider Muñoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, okay, and the last one is a motion to set the public hearing for November 21st. Okay, motion by Councilmember La Romoños?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Marks.
Councilmember Amadérez?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lider Muñoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar? And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, that concludes item 11. Thank you all, thank you Hippo for trying to sub. Okay. All right, Leanne, city administrators' report, anything?
No report.
No report, okay, city attorneys' report.
I'd like to make a brief report on this new campaign finance law. It was an article in the Mercury this morning, in fact, that you may have all seen called, Finance Law Could Shift Role of Local Money. And I'd just like to explain briefly, Ty also sent a memorandum out to you, which was an FPPC staff opinion about whether or not the law would apply to contributions from 2022. That's not been adopted by the FPPC, as I understand it, but that's an open issue.
and it says that under certain circumstances, persons cannot vote on projects or permits, entitlements, and so on, where the people voting have received a campaign contribution in excess of $250 in the last year. And you might wonder why you've never worried about that ordinance. The answer is that the way the ordinance was drafted and is now in effect, and has been for many years, it has an enormous loophole, and that is it does not apply to directly elected officials. So in other words, it does not apply to the Gilroy City Council. So you might ask, who does it apply to?